Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the July 20th, 2021 Special School Board Meeting to Order. The first item today is to accept the agenda. Superintendent Hyde, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
No ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for the July 20th, 2021, with the, um, as printed, no revisions. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Now I would like to ask Board Member William Allen to please give our invocation today. I would ask you to please stand and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Allen?
All right, let's pray. Father, we are so thankful for a new day, a new beginnings, and we know that your mercies are new. We have new people in our seats this morning and new ideas, and we are so excited about the work that's ahead in these next few minutes. Give us discernment as we make decisions that will impact every individual student and their seats around our county. We're so thankful for life today. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Allen. At this time, I would like to ask Board Member Lynn Wilson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and everyone, please be seated. At this time, I would like to address any public comments on the agenda item for today. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak on any items that are on the agenda today, namely the superintendent's tentative budget? Okay, we have two individuals that have signed up to speak. So, as I call your name, if you would come forward, we would appreciate that, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Let me start with Stephanie Yocum. Good morning.
Stephanie Yocum, President of the Polk Education Association, 7:30 East Davidson Street. Um, I'm gonna keep it brief today. You guys are going to be voting to advertise the tentative budget for the superintendent that he's proposing to you guys today, and we had started bargaining yesterday for the 21-22 school year. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, it is on our YouTube page. Um, you know, Mr. Hyde was present, and we had very productive conversation yesterday. And the district is proposing a wage increase for our support staff, but we need to do a little bit better. Our surrounding private sector is taking, they are taking our paraeducators and our secretary clerical units, they're taking our bus drivers, they're taking our custodians because they can work at Amazon for 20-plus dollars an hour now, they can work at Wendy's for 13, they can get in the state employee system and work for 13 an hour, and we're proposing 11 with only a 2% increase for our veteran paraeducators and secretary clerical staff, and we have to do better now if we're going to keep them. And so, we are going into a subcommittee today to talk about that, and I'm very excited about that subcommittee, and I hope that we can look at the money we have with the influx of cash coming in from the federal government that we know we can do reimbursements for, for other things, to free up general fund money. We have to invest in our employees now, or we're not gonna have them. And so, I urge you to, um, talk to your district team, work with Mr. Hyde, and work with us so that we can keep our employees here for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yocum. And next, I have Lisa Burke. If you'd like to come forward, Ms. Burke, and once again, you've got three minutes to address the board.
Good morning, my name's Lisa Burke. I'm with Asmi Local 2227, I'm the president, I live at Lake Wells, 3100 Fast Track Tran Lake Wells. I'm gonna talk to you about the budget today, as we are, um, gonna set that, and as we're still negotiating 19 and 20, there was talk at previous board member, previous board meetings about the general funds starting to save some for rainy days. Our rainy days are just here now, and it's pouring. We've lost drivers in Area 6 yesterday due to another job paying 1550. I've got some more of this planned, and I'm leaving. We are losing employees left and right, custodians, bus drivers, we need to make sure that we pay competitive wages with other counties, but we should be the county that all those drivers wanna go to. We should be the ones that they say, huh, Polk County's so much better, let me go work there. They treat their employees better, sometimes that doesn't happen here. And my other issue was on the policy. We wanna save public comments, right? There was a comment about a reasonable opportunity whose meaning of reasonable is, whose meaning of reasonable, yours or mine? One, public comments should all be heard, we should not limit, you wanna say if one group is here, and I have 20 people that wanna speak, and you shouldn't limit just one person, they should all be heard. That's what public comments is for. We're all public employees. The public is what put us here. They should be able to be heard. I understand if it's obscene, they're out of control, and they don't live here, I can understand that, but we still need to hear those public comments because they're the reason we're here. They put us in these positions, and we knew what it took for these positions and what was required. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak this morning? Okay, seeing none, we shall proceed. Next, we come to our action agenda this morning, and Item 1 is permission to advertise the superintendent's 2021-2022 tentative budget. What I'd like to do is ask for a motion and a second, after which we will discuss it. So, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, having a motion and a second, I'd like to have some discussion. I think Superintendent Hyde, I'd like to turn it over to you at this point.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was, I was distracted. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm turning it over to you to have Ms. Jenkins come forward if she'd like to go through the, uh, go through the tentative budget with us this morning.
Ms. Jenkins, if you would please approach.
Good morning, thank you all for being here with us today.
Good morning.
We're gonna take a little bit more time than we usually do due to the lateness of the information.
Thank you.
We received our final numbers from the Department of Education late Friday evening, so our team's been working to prepare this information for you. What our advertisement is, is it's the first piece, as part of our truth in millage, we call it TRIM, so we're required to advertise our tentative budget two to five days before we have our tentative hearing. So, within the second calculation, what we learned is that our millage had gone down .016 mils from what they had listed in the conference report. It's still 2.76% above the rollback rate, but it did go down a little bit. The other information in the calculation, I'm just giving you an overview now, and then we'll go through the packet that I sent you. The other information that we received, the fourth calculation was $1.3 million higher than the total amount in the conference report. That can be seen in the increase of required local effort. Our tax base in Polk County and across the state has increased the revenue from that. It's also $9.2 million higher than what we received in the fourth calculation for 2021. The majority of those funds are listed in items that are categoricals, which means there are specific ways in which you can spend those dollars. Important things to note about the second calculation, the compression adjustment increased $740,000, which is a benefit to Polk County, that's something that we were adamant about maintaining. The turnaround supplement to assist our turnaround schools has gone down $793,000. That's an area that we supplement our budget. Last year, we put an additional $2 million in, so we'll need to take an extra look at that, make sure that we have our services covered. The safe school allocation increased $31,000. The McKay estimate statewide and for Polk decreased, decreased in general, ours went down $346,000. The amount estimated for the family empowerment scholarship, which we've discussed with the board, has gone up 3.5 million, and required local effort has gone up about 1.3 million. So now, I'd like to go through, we'll go through the packet I sent you. The first page is just our agenda for today. On the second page, you'll see our, our initial blush at our budget. The total budget comes to $2.2 million. The required local effort for this year is 3.581. Last year, it was 3.687. Our total millage is 5, 5.829 mils, that includes required local effort discretionary and capital outlay. Last year, it was 5.935. The reason that we're still receiving an increased amount of funding is because our tax base has increased. And we had a discussion with the Department of Education, and statewide, they've lowered the millage for all the districts a tiny bit. You'll see our total for general fund is about a billion dollars. Special revenue is a lot higher this year, it's showing 598 million. That includes some ESER funding, we'll go over the description in a moment. We've also listed debt services, capital projects, and internal service. So if you'll turn to your next page, it's a summary of our major components. Our general operating budget is one, around a billion dollars, it was close last year, to the same amount. Appropriations include an estimated total in-funding balance of $72 million, which is comprised of non-spendable fund balance for inventory and prepaid's restricted, assigned and unassigned. So we've talked a little bit about this before. Our fund balance is broken into categories, and the assigned and unassigned portions are the pieces that, that make up the DOE calculation where we have to meet 3%, and the board's policy is 5%. So the minimum assigned and unassigned fund balance in order to meet board policy is $42 million. Our budgeted assigned and unassigned fund balance, which includes our salary increases as proposed, is $34.7 million. That is below board policy, yet above DOE policy. It would have us ending at about 4.06%. Special revenue is close to $600 million, and within that, we've budgeted $410 million in CARES or ESER funding. We still have not received guidance on ESER II or the ARP funds, the American Recovery Plan. We do have our estimated allocations, but we are not able to draw down or reply for those funds until we receive the, the packet and information from DOE. However, we do want you to know the estimated amounts, that's why it's included. Our debt service budget is budgeted to be $66.5 million. Our payments for debt service are around $37 million. Debt service is used to pay long-term debt incurred by the district, that includes our COPS and our sales tax. Capital projects, our capital project budget is estimated to be around $390 million. This amount represents $169 million in anticipated revenue and a beginning fund balance of $221 That's allocated to various projects across the district. As you all know, we have the half-cent sales tax, which is dedicated to building, we also have our impact fees, we have our local capital outlay, all of those things make up our capital. Our internal service fund budget is around $139 million, that includes our health insurance and our workers' compensation. Do you all have any questions about these pieces? Yes, Mr.?
Yes, thank you. So, just, I'm just curious, why would we budget more in the debt service than we anticipate spending?
Because we have something called a sinking fund. One of our loans has a payment at the end.
Okay.
So we budget incrementally throughout the years for that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one other question as well. Let me get my notes here. So, the millage rate went backwards for the RLE. It seems like a rollback. Yeah, the state said they wouldn't be rolling it back. Do we, do we have a sense of why that happened?
Um, with the conversation that I had with DOE, they indicated that statewide, the property tax values were up. It is still higher than the rollback rate. They indicated that it was a formula that they used to calculate the funding based on the FEFP. We could, our calculation, TRIM requirements require that you budget at 96% of your estimated receipts for taxes. We could come in higher than that. We typically come in at or above, so this is our budgeted amount. That's, that being said, um, they reduce the amount to show the actual percentage that they have to give us in state funding based on what they anticipate that we're going to receive, and because our tax base is higher, it works as an inverse. As the tax base goes up, as you've seen in the past, the millage rate typically goes down.
Well, that is exactly the problem.
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't, and the explanation they gave you is consistent with the rollback. I mean, it absolutely is consistent with the rollback. So, we were told there would be no rollback, yet we're seeing a rollback. I understand, it's not as much in prior years, but still, that's problematic. That's, you know, there's a reason why property values are going up, that's because people are moving here, and we need more ser-, we have more services, or we need more services. And so, how do we pay for those if we, if we aren't given the tools we need and the resources we need to cover them? That's challenging. I know this is not, you don't have an answer to that, those are really just comments. So, that is a little stunning to me, being told that there would be no rollback, and yet this is exactly what this is. Not as much, but it's nevertheless a rollback.
It's about a $5 million difference just to the general fund.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may clarify as well, Heather received this information Friday evening at 6:00 PM?
8:30.
8:30 PM. So we were very much under the impression that there would be no additional rollback, and to find this out, you know, we had shared projected revenue prior, previously in an email, and then Ms. Jenkins unfortunately had the unenviable responsibility of communicating with me at 9 o'clock at night on a Friday to say, oops, they are rolling it back. But your, your point is well taken, and it's something we have to continue to advocate against and for, because the, the benefit of that is, is as we grow, the detriment to our school districts, as we grow, while we have some capital funds to help us maintain and build new facilities, operational costs will continue to grow. We have to staff those schools, we have to support those schools, instructionally with their materials, and so, yes, it's, it's a point we have to continue to advocate at the state level.
I agree, and I, I think the thing that's most difficult for me to understand is, why would the state care if we're asking our local, our local residents to help us out a little bit more? I'm just not sure why that would be relevant to them. Maybe at some point in time, we could ask that question. You don't have to ask it, but I'll ask it.
I'd love to ask it.
Please do. But if I get the chance, I'll ask that as well, just, it just doesn't make sense, it's just, you know, not logical.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Would you like to continue with, anyone else have any questions up to this point? All right, Ms. Jenkins, if you would continue.
Yes, ma'am. The next port, piece of your packet is our notice of tax for school capital outlay. So for our local and cap, local capital improvement funds, our LCI millage, we're required to advertise anything that we intend on spending those funds for. The one piece that we've added this year that's new from last year is new library books. You're able to, when you build a school, you're able to outfit your library, or also if you add a media center, entire collections of books can be paid for from capital funding. So that's to ensure that we're able to add additional resources if that decision is made. So we do believe that we'll get, based on our 1.5 millage rate, $70 million in local capital funds. The next piece is the notice of proposed tax increase. We're required to run this ad if our millage rate is higher than the official rollback rate. So we have our initial proposed tax levy, which is last year's amount of $265 million, plus increases due to the value adjustment board when they go through in review of $618,000. Our actual property tax levy for 2021 was $266 million, and then this year's proposed levy is $283 million. That's an increase of 200, 2.76%. It talks here about a portion of the tax levy required for us to receive $626 million from the Board of Education. We have to tax at the required local effort rate, or we are ineligible to receive our funding from the Department of Education. So that's why that piece is printed in the advertisement. We'll discuss some of this again at our tentative budget hearing because there's required language for the board and the public to be made aware of. Information about millage levies. This is something that Mr. Pitts prepared many years ago, which is very helpful, so it explains to the board and the public what a mill is. A mill is one tenth of one cent. A one-mill tax levy is a proposed tax of a doll, $1 per $1,000 of property adjustment. So, things that are important to our residents, there is a homestead exemption of, the normal exemption is $25,000. So if, for example, if you have a home that's worth $75,000 and you apply for the homestead exemption, that reduces your taxable value down to $50,000, and that would be the portion that you were taxed on. So based on this year's millage rate, if you have a home worth $50,000, your tax would be $291.45. We go into explaining what the difference in the millages are. Our required local effort, which is the amount we have to tax in order to receive our funding from the Department of Education. Our discretionary millage, which is the .75 mils that can be used for discretionary operating, and then the 1.5 mils for capital outlay. It's important to note that the capital outlay millage has decreased over the years, it used to be a lot higher, and they took the portion of that outlay millage and diverted it into the discretionary operating millage. So right now, we're capped at 1.5. The next section shows you what our to, total millage is for this year. The required local effort is 3.581 mils, discretionary operating of .748, leaving your total operating at 4.435. That will yield us about $11 million. Our total capital outlay is 1.5, well, $11 million over last year, my apologies, it's $190 million. And then our capital outlay millage will yield about $5.6 million more than we had in the prior year. This tax levy is about 11 cents less than the amount we received per $1,000 for the prior year. The next piece is just a letter that we have to send to the newspaper in order to run our advertisements, followed by the ad requirements. There are very specific guidelines we have to follow when we print our ad in the newspaper. And then the last two pieces are the resolutions that you'll see at the tentative budget hearing so that you have a first look at them. The first lists the millage and the rates that it will generate at 96%, which we've gone over, and then the second resolution shows you that our total budget is about $2.2 billion this year. So with your permission, we will run an advertisement in the ledger, and then we will run that this, this coming Saturday, and then next Tuesday, we will come back to the board for our tentative budget hearing, and then followed by that- And then, followed by that, September seventh, we'll be back for our final budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. So, board members, we have a motion and a second to advertise the superintendent's 2021-2022 tentative budget. Are there any comments? Ms. Fortney.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. I just want to clarify for public knowledge. On your budget summary, the pupil transportation services, could you give us some figures on what we get versus what we spend?
Yes, ma'am.
That's one.
Bear with me one moment, please. So, our transportation allocation this year is twenty-four-point-seven million dollars. And we budget a significant amount over that at forty-one-point-two million. We've had increased transportation costs as well because of the way that our district is laid out to ensure that we can pick up our students, increase routes, various other things. We're also going to see an increase in repair parts this year, which factor into that. A lot of equipment and items, we're either unable to receive or some have seen as high of a markup as fifty percent. In our research, we've also been made aware that diesel fuel and gas costs are anticipated to increase.
We're also opening up several new schools.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that will create more bus routes and probably more bus purchases, I would imagine.
But this is your best guess estimate as to how much we're going to lose, basically?
Yes, ma'am. We worked with the Transportation Department to try and forecast the cost increase and to make sure it's included.
That kind of goes to my next point, and maybe you can explain, since I've not been able to ask you this. I've asked for a few years now. Our steps in years' experience, people, I, I can remember a time when that was an automatic budget item. Can, can you explain, try to, to me, why we don't do that anymore and why we can't?
It has not been done for the past few years or several years due to budgetary constraints. We, we are looking into our budget. We are looking for more effective ways. Mr. Hyde has come in and has many good ideas about pulling everything apart and being able to review that so that we can identify the best way to use our dollars. It all comes down to funding. We, we do want to increase our salaries. We want to take care of our employees, and we are looking for a way to do that.
I understand that, but it's hard to talk to employees knowing that some of them fall in the same system that used to do this, and now, we don't. And I just need help explaining that because you just said we're going to need more buses, et cetera. We, we're going to need drivers for those buses, attendants, et cetera. You know, it's all interrelated and valuing our employees. And then, this might be a Mr. Pitts question, but, and you might have already answered it. And I turned sixty recently, and I'm having issues remembering stuff. So, don't ask me why. I don't know. I'm going to start taking that Prevegen. But what is our total FRS contribution to the state?
Ten percent. Is that, oh, the dollar amount?
Dollar amount.
I can't recall at this moment in time. Jason, do you remember?
Mr. Pitts, if you have.
It's, it's going to be almost eleven percent of our entire personnel budget, so.
So, eleven percent.
Off the top of my head, we're talking nineteen million dollars.
All right. Thanks so much.
Off the top of my head.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Miller?
I've asked for this in the past, but I'm asking again. As far as transportation budget, we've made some decisions about programming specifically last year where we're going to introduce programs between elementary, middle, and high school that are significantly miles apart. We also have to fund choice to our magnets with transportation. I would like to see a breakdown of transportation costs. That's my first question. Because we're looking at the overview of it, but there are some specific things that we do as a county that when you talk at the state level, other districts do not fund. So, I would like to see, I would like to see those numbers, please. And my other question is, at the beginning, you talked about a reduction in McKay and a significant increase in empowerment. Is that because the McKay is no longer, it was folded into the empowerment? So, you're, we have gone down three-hundred-something thousand in McKay and up significantly because all of this, all ships are now enrolled, I mean, rolled into one?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Excuse me. It's my understanding, a portion of McKay, I believe you've talked about it before, is when they McKay within the district. I believe the remaining funding is for that estimate. And as you've stated, they've all been rolled into one. So, that is just DOE's estimate of what those costs will be. But we work with our Student Information System Department and our other, and our E S E departments to estimate what those amounts will be. We do review it periodically so that we ensure we have enough budgeted. And quarterly, we will bring any changes as we receive our, our new calculations. There are five per year. We receive four and the final one in October. But as we see what our revenues and expenditures are, we will bring that back to the board and update you.
And as part of that transportation breakdown, I would like to see what we pay to be involved, to help students McKay within the district and/or there are some of the empowerment scholarships that we provide within the district, such as the Hope, what, what that cost in transportation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll put that together for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fields?
Okay. First of all, thank you for the presentation this morning, the end-up presentation. I think what concerns me is that we didn't get anything in writing, to my knowledge, saying that you guys were having to delay attaching this document to the agenda. I noticed it yesterday when I was reviewing it for today. I think out of courtesy, especially, this is one of our major roles as a board member, is to approve budget. It would have been nice for you all to at least say that there's a delay and, and this is what we're doing and we'll have it to you. There's no way I'm going to be looking at a document at ten-thirty last night. I'm just not going to do that. So, I have not even had time to really review it. My question is, when are we going to have end-up discussion as it relates to this budget? How everything was compiled? If we have specific questions like Ms. Miller was asking a few minutes ago, when are we going to have an opportunity? And it might be a Mr. Hyde question. When are we going to have, have an opportunity to really discuss this budget before we vote to approve it?
So, so the board has an active, ongoing ability to engage with me and my office to submit any questions so that we can bring those forward, not only provide a written response to individual board members and then to the collective group. In my prior practice, anytime I receive a question from a board member, not only would I, would we provide a response to that board member, but I will also respond to the collective board so that they get that additional background. But I think what we would do is anticipate additional dialogue prior to any budgetary approval. And if we have to extend or provide another meeting such as this so that we can provide a high level of transparency and address all those questions, because your, your point is very well taken. This should have been attached in a more timely manner, and I will address that and ensure that we have that done in the future. But any questions that you have, please submit those, and we will continue to engage and provide that level of clarification and transparency that we need to. So, just funnel those questions through me. Please feel free to copy Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Pitts, but we will get you a timely response within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And then, again, I would like to bring those questions back publicly at an upcoming meeting so that our community knows the depth in which our board members are asking these types of questions for clarification so that they don't feel that we're rushing a budget through to approval. And, and that brings up another point. So, we have, I had had discussion with, with a few board members about an efficiency audit. And that's not something, something we necessarily need to contract. It is something that we can engage in, but it is not something the district should do alone. It is something that the district should engage various community stakeholder groups in. They have a sincere and legitimate interest in helping us. And quite honestly, I think we need to embrace and celebrate those areas where we do well financially, where our investments are, are well placed and, and well funded. But we also have to acknowledge those areas of deficiency. And we do have costs. As Ms. Jenkins shared, when we, we use the phrase, "take things apart," I, I know that may be alarming to some people, but, and you and I have had a separate conversation about opportunities. So, we have persistent vacancies. Our architect is a great example. And we ultimately, when that individual retires, we may have to go out to contracted service. But there are other savings at the district level where we have multiple positions that have remained open. It may be an opportunity for us to consolidate those positions, elevate the existing positions to a higher pay grade because they're already doing two jobs. And so, there's an ongoing conversation here that we have to have. And to Ms. Miller's point, when we talk about efficiencies, we have chosen to provide transportation for a variety of different programs. So, it's, we should break that out and provide you the cost analysis so we know the impact that that decision's having on our economics. It doesn't mean it will be offset by our philosophy. If our intent was to make sure that we can provide students' choice regardless of their zip code and give them gainful access and opportunity in our Magnet Academy and other programs, then that's a commitment we make, but we do so with our eyes open, knowing these are the costs that come, are associated with that level of support and service for our community. So, to your question, submit any questions that you have, Ms. Fields. But yes, if the board feels there has not been enough time for us to discuss this at length, we will make, we will provide additional opportunities prior to any approval. I will not rush the budget forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. My question was very much in line with Ms. Fields because this isn't the first year that we've gotten the budget late. We typically, I think the earliest we've ever gotten it is maybe ten PM the Friday night before, at least in my time on the board, just because we typically get the numbers very late from the state. I know with VAM scores this year, we were finally successful in getting a hard deadline. They have to give it to us by, because our meeting today is required to be today, correct? Or is, because we couldn't do it two weeks from now.
In actuality, this meeting is not required by statute. It's a meeting that has always been done by poll. You're required to have your tentative hearing. And then, you're required to have your final. In my, if I may, in my prior district, we did not hold this meeting. But one thing we did do is we provided the board with the tentative budget at the budget hearing, which is permission to begin spending your funding. The board compiled any questions, as Mr. Hyde has stated, and sent those back to us. And then, in August, we had a workshop where we discussed your questions and ensured that you understood the budget. That way, you were prepared to vote on the final in September.
Okay. So, because today's meeting is just to advertise essentially what we got Friday.
Permission to vote.
Okay. I think if we could more clearly articulate that in our messaging too, just because people see they're having a budget meeting. I got several calls the past couple of days of, "Oh, you're meeting on the Budget Tuesday." Yeah, I haven't, we haven't gotten it from the state, what it can be yet. So, if we can just advertise that so that people understand what we're up against time-wise too, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor of advertising the superintendent's 2021-2022 tentative budget, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, board members. And the next item this morning is our superintendent's report. Mr. Hyde, do you have an update for us today?
There is no super. There is no superintendent's report for today. However, the next work session and board meeting will be held on July twenty-seventh, 2021. The work session will begin at twelve-thirty PM, and the board meeting will begin at five PM. They will be held at the Jim Miles Professional Development Center located at five-two-zero-four U.S. Highway Ninety-Eight South in Lakeland. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have our attorney's report. Mr. Bridges, do we have a report today?
Madam Chair, no attorney's report, but the superintendent has indicated to me that he wishes to hold a, an executive session at the close of today's work session for purposes of discussing collective bargaining issues, which is specifically allowed by Florida Statute four-four-seven.
Wonderful. And where will that be held, Mr. Bridges?
I think we'll, we'll hold it across the hall, just for, for everyone's convenience. That is a meeting that is, that is, it is confidential and exempt. It is not noticed. It is, there are no minutes, there is no agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is our auditor's report. However, there is no auditor's report today from Ms. Matthews. Next, we have our board member reports, and I'll start with Mr. Allen.
Very minimal comments today. Just wanted to say we're happy to have Superintendent Hyde on board. This is our first official meeting with him at the helm. As I make way around District One and my constituency, it's clear that he's been active so already. So, thank you for what you're doing. Keep that up. And I think in moving forward, just as an update, I've had a couple of individuals reach out to me as well wanting to know about stipend and bonus payout. I would love to have a report next time that we meet just to say, okay, we've, we've paid out, you know, this much of all the bonuses, all the stipends from last year. And I know that was addressed in email in regards to the concerns with the state and their initiated bonus. So, I think that would be great just to, from a public standpoint, just to bring that awareness of how we have honored our teachers and staff across the board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Next, Sarah Fortney?
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. I have been out and about in my district as well. I would like to encourage folks. Kingsford Elementary is getting a new school, Willow Oak, and they are in dire need of some monetary donations as far as new uniforms. Those kids cannot transfer those shirts to the new school. And so, if you have it in your heart to try to donate and, and help some of that community in Mulberry, that would be a blessing for them. Speaking of blessings, our international baccalaureate diploma rate at Barto IB, at IB at Barto High School was ninety-one percent pass rate. That is an accomplishment that, when I taught there, I don't believe we ever exceeded that. So, and we had some instructors, like Mr. Ekman, band director, he had a hundred percent pass rate of his kids. One of our outstanding history teachers, ninety-three percent pass rate. So, that's a lot of hard work by staff and students. And I want to thank publicly the City Commission of Barto and, and for doing a proclamation last night. And all those teachers showed up, you know, even on their little summer break. Speaking of which, if you drive by schools, you'll see the staff's still working there. Really hasn't stopped just because there's no kids every day. There they are. Speaking of that, I'm, I'm hoping to bring something to promote some equity here on our programs. We have some programs around the district that are managed by assistant principals, like Cambridge, Sarabeth, Kathleen High School, our Central Florida Air Academy. And those folks are doing the work of the school leader. And I'd, I'd like to entertain something along the lines of Summerlin and Harrison to talking about combining and promoting, giving those folks some autonomy at their individual schools by rewarding those individuals. I just wanted to kind of put that out there in the public. I think it would be beneficial because, as I've said before, even principals don't grow on trees either, especially good ones. So, and then, last, not last, but two more things. I, I really hope, to Mr. Allen's point, either stipends and the bonuses, there was some confusion as to who gets what, when, how, why, how it was paid, et cetera. Some clarification would be great on that. And, you know, I'm always going to advocate to pay and show support and respect for all our employees. And I just hope that we can come up with living wages for all of them. And last but not least, I believe on September fourteenth, five-thirty to seven-thirty, Mr. Hyde, you'll be doing a question and answer at Barto Civic Center. Is that in stone or in writing? Uh, is that in stone or in writing yet? I wanted to invite folks.
September?
September fourteenth. For District Three.
Yes, ma'am. Community Conversations?
Pardon me? Yes.
At five PM?
Oh, is it five? Maybe that's when you-
I have something on my calendar for five PM.
Okay. And then September twentieth, uh, also, kind of your area, Mr. Allen, too, but Barto kind of draws from there as well. So.
That is correct.
Just wanted to, uh, point that out and invite the public to come and meet and greet you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Those will be advertised with more clarity. Uh, Mr. Garrity and others will assist. These were tentatively placed because we wanted to regionalize opportunities and meet people in their communities, so. But yes, these will be largely advertised.
I just know folks' calendars fill up fast.
Yes, ma'am.
So I put it out there. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a very short report today. The number of phone calls that I've gotten from people that usually call because something is wrong to tell me that they have just met with our new superintendent and how incredible he is, is, have been overwhelming. And taken several hours out of the past couple of weeks. So thank you for whatever you are doing out in our communities and meeting with people because the community's, it's one thing for them to say, "Oh, yeah, I had a great meeting." But for them to feel the need to call and then talk for twenty minutes about all of the great things that, um, you've said and indicated is very reassuring. So thank you and continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Can I report?
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to welcome Superintendent Hyde. It's good to have you on board. Ms. Yocan mentioned that the PEA would be discussing budget matters and might have some ideas. I think it's important that we hear from them, so I look forward to that report whenever you, whenever you do that. And I wanna thank Superintendent Hyde for being part of the PEA discussions. I think that's gonna be incredibly helpful. That engagement is, um, I think will be very beneficial, so thank you for that. There was some discussion about the efficiency audit, and I know Mr. Hyde and I have talked about that. And I, I had some questions about, as Miller mentioned, there were some things we do in the way of transportation to other districts. Don't do, but I, I, the conversation back and forth with Mr. Hyde, I think you, you're well aware of that and on top of that, so thank you for that as well. And lastly, there were some comments about limiting public comments. Do, it, you're not sure where that comes from? Okay. Alright. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to mention that I did get to visit, uh, New Boys and Girls Club here in Barto at Given Street. They had an open house. Um, they're looking to expand into the Fort Meade area. And I think, I hadn't, I did not realize of the facilities that we had that were sitting empty that could be used for our community partnerships. And I think that's probably across the district, and I would like to see us look into more, um, of those opportunities. It really met the needs here in Barto. Not, we're not in Barto, we're in South Lakeland. But in Barto, as well as, uh, what could happen in Fort Meade. So, um, I know in my district, I'm gonna start looking around at the buildings that we own and services that we provide. And hopefully, we can come with some more community partnerships. I think that's very important, especially for families, working families, for the after-school programs. Um, I do wanna thank Mr. Hyde. I've heard great things. Um, I've had more communication than I've probably ever needed. Um, and I think that's very important. Um, it's good for, it's good for me, and when I get questions from the community, I have the information to provide. Um, I look forward to talking more about the budget. Um, like Mr. Wilson said, you know, we've been saying efficiency audit because that's what we hear from the community. So we need to be transparent in what we're doing, providing not only the budget and explanation, but categorically, um, things like transportation and other areas where maybe the community could have input or collaboration. So I think it's important we're having those conversations, and I look forward to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I just have a few comments as well. Um, first of all, I, I do want to welcome you officially, Superintendent Hyde. We're so excited that you're on board. I would have to echo the comments of my colleagues when I say the communication piece that you've been able to do with all of us has been incredible. Um, I too have received so many different comments, phone calls, um, texts, for those that you have met with and have made the opportunity to meet with and have taken the time out of your schedule as, I mean, you've only been really in this position for twenty days. And the impact that you have already made in Polk County is definitely being felt across the districts, from what I'm hearing, and, and particularly in mine as well. So I wanna say thank you. I think the communication piece is probably the most important thing as we were looking for a new superintendent, uh, that that was at the forefront as we move forward. And you've definitely, in the short period of time, um, delivered on that. So thank you very much. I also wanna say that I've heard from staff and the impact that you've already made on our district staff. Um, in your ability to work with others, your ability to discern what's going on, your ability to understand the nuances, 'cause obviously you're coming not only, you know, from out of state, but in a different position. You've been able to do that, from what I'm hearing, from our staff excellently. And you're willing to ask those tough questions. You're willing to address them straight on. And you're very fair and equitable as you do that. So I just wanna thank you from our staff perspective as well. We are also going to have the Town Hall Meeting, as it's now being called, if you will, that's being set up by Kim Long with Polk Vision. From what I understand, um, our Town Hall Meeting for Northeast Polk County has been set for September the twenty-first from five to seven PM at Lake Eva Banquet Hall. And I understand all of that has already, um, been done. And if you'd like to, as Ms. Fortney said, put it on your calendars. We're very excited for the community to come out and meet our new superintendent, if you haven't already. I know that he's gonna be actively, um, touring our schools in August. So for those that haven't met him, you may at that point, but if not, join us, Northeast Polk, or anyone else who wants to come out on the twenty-first of September to do so. And we also are very excited as we approach the beginning of school. In my area, we have two new schools opening up, which is Davenport High School. And, uh, Mr. Dujie has been very, very busy. I know there's a upcoming meet and greet for the staff, um, on the twenty-sixth. So we're excited, uh, for families to come out and meet new teachers and coaches and all of that, which will be wonderful. And I just drove by the school this past weekend, and wow, what, what a beautiful piece of architecture. I mean, I don't think it's like any other school that we've got in Polk. So kudos to, um, Ms. Usher and her team. It's, it's a beautiful school. And I know, as I look around and see the number of homes now that are going in around that high school, I really don't know where we're gonna put them all, but here we go, right? We're just gonna have to deal, continue to deal with the growth in Northeast Polk. And I know that we're searching for a middle school, um, as we speak. And, and also a new high school in Point Sienna. And I, I was gonna ask, I don't know if you have an update, but we can save it for next week. I'd like to know where we stand on purchasing that. Um, that would be very helpful to get us moving 'cause the growth continues to way exceed our, um, expectations in the northeast side of the county. And I guess that is a blessing. We just have to have seats for students to sit in when they come to us, so. Okay, with that, that concludes my report today.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Excuse me, what time is, is the Town Hall Meeting at Lake Eva?
It is five to seven on that evening. Yes, sir. On the twenty-first. Yes, sir. Okay, next we come to, um, agenda.
Madam President?
Excuse me?
Ms. Reynolds had her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, can you send out a list of all of them for every, I know we were each told ours, but-
Yeah.
I was just speaking to Ms. Winchester. They were waiting to confirm all of the locations, the venues. But I believe they've done that within the last twenty-four hours. So we'll work to get a communication out to all of you with a comprehensive list.
Thank you so much.
As well as the community. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward who signed up to speak? Okay, seeing none, we shall proceed. The next order of business, board members, is adjournment. And the meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned. Thank you.